Okay, let's call the meeting to order. Good evening, everyone. We are reconvening our open session. And I'd like to ask our clerk to report actions taken in closed session.
Yes, thank you. Let me see. Okay, here we go. On a six to zero vote, the board took action in closed session at its meeting on September 23rd, 2024, to eliminate the position of testing center assistance effective November 28th, November 30th, 2024, due to the expiration specially grade program. The administration, I'm sorry, this is hard to read, remedies of the classified employers has subsequently been exhausted.
Okay, thank you.
Can we? There's three altogether. Do you read them all?
Yes.
Okay, I couldn't. All right, the second one. On a six to zero vote, the board took action in closed session at its meeting of September 23rd to eliminate the position of testing center specialist effective November 30th, 2024, due to the expiration of a specially funded program. The administrative remedies of the classified employee has subsequently been exhausted. And the third one. On a six to zero vote, the board took action in closed session to accept the resignation of a classified employee and to approve the separation agreement and general release, which included an extension of benefits in executive by the classified employee and the district, and has authorized the chancellor to designate into the all steps necessary to effect the decision. That's all.
Thank you for that. Now have the invocation led by me, and then the pledge of allegiance led by trustee Milchiker. If you're able to stand, please do so.
Well, election is one week away. I loved Election Day. I remember.
I do, too.
Yeah, I mean, I remember when, the time when there was no mail-in ballots. And I remember standing in line, and I love standing in line. I used to bring my young children with me and actually hold them in line, and they didn't like it very much. And make them, I brought them into the booth with me when we used to vote. We still do, but have to go into the voting booth and cast your ballot. I just felt the power of that. Growing up in the Midwest and the East Coast when I first started voting, you grew up in Michigan, very cold, there's snow, there's rain, there's sleet, and I loved it. I loved standing in line. I loved feeling the power that we, the people, give the consent to the governed. And, you know, I have, I've seen, this is far imperfect, this experiment we're in, but I've lived a lot of the alternatives over the last few years and seen what happens when you don't have the consent of the government, of the people, that the government doesn't have the consent of the people. And very, very bad things happen. Extra judicial killings, pre-tal detention, human rights violations, political oppression, sham trials. These things happen when the government doesn't have the consent of the people. And so, last week, I had the opportunity to interview Ken Kachigian. Ken is, was an advisor to Presidents Nixon and Reagan, and is a longtime South Orange County resident, longtime lived in San Clemente, now lives in San Juan Capistrano, so I had the opportunity to interview him. I have a podcast series related to my other work that I do. And so, he was Ronald Reagan's chief speechwriter, and you see behind us the room we're in. So, in fact, when I was in Washington DC, when I first lived there, when I was very young, I used to go over to the National Press Club and read Reagan speeches, because I thought they were incredibly well-written. And Reagan talked mostly of freedom. And I'm like, whoo, I always wondered, who wrote these speeches? And it turns out, Ken was the chief speechwriter for President Reagan. So what I wanted to do is have a quote from President Reagan's inaugural address in 1981. And my friend now, Ken Kachigian, had a big hand in writing his inaugural address. And he said, quote, "I believe we, the Americans of today, are ready to act worthy of ourselves, ready to do what must be done to ensure happiness and liberty for ourselves, our children, and our children's children. And as we renew ourselves here in our own land, we will be seen as having greater strength throughout the world. We will again be the exemplar of freedom and a beacon of hope for those who do not now have freedom," end quote. So my message to everyone today is cherish the freedoms you have. I can't tell you how to vote, but I can urge you to go out and vote and exercise your franchise. Thank you.
Thank you. Please join me in saying the pledge of allegiance to the flag of our great nation. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
We have public comments, several requests for public comments. As a reminder, to those who are making public comments, you have two minutes. We will hold you to that. Please try to stick to that so we don't have to abruptly halt your comments, because we want to hear everybody. So first two up. Did I say, is it Robert? Okay. Okay. And Giselle Leftwich? And then, well, I'll just round them all out. Then Carmen Mara Hernandez Bravo, and then Kia, in that order. Those are the four requests for public comments. You may proceed.
Thank you. I stamped my words from a last meeting regarding our IVC community, our students, and the mission we have is serving our students. However, as a leader, I would be remiss for not, again, bring into your attention the serious concerns I have with Executive Director HR. I came to the board with humility in describing the unfair treatment of which I was on the receiving end in July 2021. In my words, I spoke to regarding the character and demeanor of the Executive Director of HR that does neither resemble or represent district policies and civility and mutual respect. This has been an ongoing dilemma since my first attentions with her, interactions with her. All I saw from her was a simple letter of apology for mistreating me with the words that did not lift me up, but rather tore me down instead of providing guidance. I know this is not the characteristics of a leader of what the district expects of their leaders. Let me be clear. I was not seeking dissimilar action or any kind of distribution, just a simple letter of apology. Although after investigation, the Executive Director and Vice Chancellor HR telling me this will not happen again, it has happened again. So my opinion, this has all been disgenuous, because Executive Director has made it personal against me right from the beginning. Years ago, as a result of my leadership, an investigation involving employee testimony uncovered and exposed a corrupt scheme of theft and using district property and supplies for personal use. I have record of leadership at IVC that spans three decades. This includes full distribution to veterans, classified employees, OPS, DSPs, for which I've received multiple awards from classified senate. I've also organized Circle K from IVC and UCI and student athletes to help as well. I also helped organize IVC's Performing Arts Center to Torrey Drive, which earned them a California senate, former senator. I've awarded 29 awards, which include a congressional record, a city award, city awards, and much more. I've been in the old city registry multiple times. In 2019, this board nominated me for the Marine de Marco Award, which recognized an individual organization for exemplary and far-reaching leadership in addressing the broad needs of our young people countywide. I will be filing a formal complaint against human resources with the State of California Civil Rights Division and filing a formal complaint with the district. I'm also making a formal request that the district investigate the human resources leadership through an independent auditing firm, as it is proven unserious for the HR department to investigate itself, which does not make logical sense. Matthew 5:9, "Bless all the peacemakers, for they will be called children of God." In closing, I ask that there be no retaliation, verbal, written, or otherwise against any witnesses and/or myself. This is for all those who are afraid to speak. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Next, please.
Hi, my name is Giselle Leftwich, and I've worked within the South Orange County Community College District for over 40 years, beginning at Saddleback College North in 1982, the district and Saddleback College. I'm currently a senior administrative assistant in the School of AMP, and I'd like to add that I work for the best dean in the entire district, Scott Farthing. Besides being an employee, I have significant ties to Saddleback College as a student, a daughter of a student, a daughter of a coach, a mother of two students, and I even met my husband here. We were both student athletes. I played on the softball team in 1982, and my husband played on the football team in 1981 and 82. Back to the matter at hand, during the first two board meetings, I asked for your support in granting classified employees parity with other groups in regards of retirement age and supplemental benefits after age 65, which is now being offered to us in year three of the proposed contract. While year three is not ideal for many of us, it is by all means better than the status quo. Therefore, I'm happy, but if it got changed a year or two, I wouldn't complain. Rather than take this win and run, I thought it only fair to come back and thank everyone involved. After all, it's the right thing to do and the way my parents raised me. First, I'd like to thank the Board of Trustees and the chancellor for allowing us to speak and listening to us. Secondly, I'd like to thank the negotiating teams for their hard work. And I'd especially like to thank the district for letting the Vice Chancellor, Viska Sill, step in and take the lead. While I was not on the negotiating team, she, I heard that she was not only instrumental in wrapping it up in record time, she did it as a professional, courteous, and thoughtful manner, essentially tying up the negotiations with a bow. Lastly, I'd like to thank the brave classified employees who, like me, fought through their fear of public speaking to share their stories. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, board members and the chancellor. I want to thank you for the resolution for having September the month of the Latina community. Because I ran out of my two minutes last time, I will continue honoring the classified employees. Career Service Technician Juan de la Cruz. Warehouse, thank you so much for always delivering on our books material and for everything we need for our event. You are the best. Julio Bernacci, Jorge Martinez, and Misael Banderas. Ground Department, thank you so much for keeping Saddleback so beautiful. The stadium is impeccable, thanks to you, as well as the trees and the plant all over the campus. Raoul Leal, Jose Huerta, Alberto Ariza, Luis Silva, and Rafael Granado. Basic Need Program, Paola Medina, Food Resource Center. Guillermo Velazquez, Program Student Support Specialist. Matriculation, Natasha Noriega Goodwin. Thanks for helping us with the prerequisite for all the International Language Department. Outreach, Marco Madaria Benavides. Thank you for coming to San Juan Hills to inform my students about the programs available at Saddleback. Counseling Office, Arthur Ariza. Transfer Center, Barbara Benavides, Senior Transfer Center Specialist. You are a gem, always helping the Latina community as they transfer to other institutions. Now, we are going to talk about Yvonne Belardes. Business and Industry. Promise Program and Mesa, Georgina Martinez, Success Coach, Promise Program. IT System Specialist. Thank you for helping us with other technology need and for always helping us in our cultural event. Alberto Ariza, Alan Juan, Gabriel Gobian, Jorge Delgado. Instructional Support and Technology Innovation. Mayra Arias, Senior Administrative Assistant.
Carmen Mara, can you please?
I will come back next time to continue with my.
You're welcome to come back every time and use all of your two minutes. Thank you.
Hello?
Please. Good evening.
How are you guys doing today? I have great news for you. For the first time ever, it's my understanding, that math department is offering a class at the community, at the high school here, in Silverada High School. It took a lot of people, a lot of work, a ton of gratitude should go to our chair, Frank Gonzalez, our dean, Art Nida, this guy went above and beyond, and Curry here, Irwin, for making this project happen. It was a year and a half in the making, but we finally offer a class to these kids in high school. Silverada High School is a continuation high school. These are the kids that nobody took them seriously. These are the kids that happened to be at the wrong time at the wrong place. So much potential, so much energy. They've had more than fair share of abuses. These are first-generation high school students, forget college, high school students. And we managed to offer them class. They are full of hope. I have a picture here printed for you, I guess you get afterward. You have no idea the impact that this class has had on these kids. Zero period. These kids are there seven o'clock in the morning to get things done. Last week, one of the gal went to the principal, stuck her head in, like, you know, this is a difficult class, but I'm glad they mean it, I'm honored in it, and I'm doing a great job, because I want you to offer this class for the next group of students. It's been huge for them. I just wanted to make you aware of this thing, and thank you for those involved. Karen, thank you. Again, thank you for your time. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Thank you for that. Thanks for those comments. We're now moving on to our board reports, and I'm going to start to my left this evening with trustee Dec.
Real quick.
Oh, yeah.
Is it possible, if we can get the picture, so we can pass it down to DAS? Okay. After? Okay.
Okay. Trustee Dec.
All right, I gotta open up my calendar here, because we had a lot of stuff going on this last month. The first thing I'd like to note was, the day after our last board meeting, we had the IVC Walk of Hope for Suicide Awareness. I was proud to be present, along with fellow trustee Inman on that day, and got to walk around IVC's campus and hear from a great speaker. So I was proud to have been there and done the walk. Later that week, we had Saddleback College homecoming game. I was proud to be present for that as well. It's always fun going to the Saddleback Stadium and, you know, just connecting with folks up in the box. Beyond that, we had Advantech groundbreaking. I'm sure everyone's going to be talking about that up here, but it was a really big day for us here and for our ATEP site. And I'll keep this brief. So I guess we also had the OCBC 30th Annual Economic Forecast. And for those that were not able to, you know, attend or are aware of our economic future here, it seems like a lot of issues are surrounding housing, and so I just want to just point out again that I'm really proud of the work that we've done here on the board to facilitate student housing and updating our master plan to get that done so that our students can be housed. And that's it for me. Thank you.
Thank you.
Me?
Yeah.
So, just since our last meeting, two main events that I was able to attend, Tustin Unified School District Celebration of Schools was very well-presented by our superintendent, Mark Johnson. It was on the Legacy Campus, which is a new campus in Tustin Unified, presentations by the students there, the collaboration with their entrepreneur program in IVC is example to the state of what can be done with that collaboration. So that was really nice to hear. I also was at the Orange County School Board Association Dinner Presentation last week, and the guest speaker was really engaging and got us up moving around and learning how important it is to treat employees not only with respect to their, to their job, but respect to their life, and how a, just simple acts of understanding their perspective can go miles in making them feel valued and want to work hard for you. And it was really valuable information for, it's mainly being presented to K-12 boards, but superintendents and the like, so it was really, really well-done. All right, that's all I have.
Thank you for that. Trustee Inman.
I usually have a theme. It's often legislation or fine arts or something. Tonight, it's about foundations. It was my pleasure to attend the first meeting as representative from this board to the Irvine Valley College Foundation. And somebody asked me shortly afterwards, did I like it? What did you like about it? And I love what we do here, it's important and so forth. But what I loved about the foundation was that it has one theme. It's clear, it's good, it's solid, nobody would be against it. The more people that we have that are in favor of it, the better it all is. So I'm very happy to be doing that. And then, speaking of that, on Friday night, we went to the Saddleback College Gala. That's always a huge, wonderful event. It's a beautiful setting, had very good food. My stepfather was a famous chef. Serving banquets and making everything be warm is just like the huge challenge, and so I'm always impressed when that happens. The people were wonderful, and it was just really, really a very nice event. And I want to thank the staffs and all the people that helped put together those events, and the board members and so forth, and especially, of course, the donors. And speaking of galas, we're going to have one at Irvine Valley College, Celebrating Excellence Awards Dinner is what it's called. So I'll just read a little thing from one of their publicity things. "The IVC Foundation's Annual Awards Dinner will be held on Friday, March 7th, 2025." It's almost here. "This event brings together about 300 community members to celebrate the opportunities IVC provides to students and raise funds to help them succeed." So, thank you, everyone who helps raise those funds.
Thank you for that, trustee Inman. Trustee Rydell.
Good evening, everyone. I'd like to dovetail the gala. It was, it was a beautiful night. The setting, obviously, is very nice. I appreciated the presentations by the students, it was video, and I found it to be very insightful, very insightful. President Stern, your presentation was right on and most informative. And Liz and her team were Paula, Emily, and Dana. I'm missing someone. You worked very hard to present this. It was obvious. And my table had, everybody enjoyed it, they really did. The Classified Appreciation Luncheon was great, because I go there, I didn't even eat. I went there to see the smiles. If you go to the appreciation luncheon, the classified, they are smiling. And notice what the title of this event is, Appreciation. And I want them to know that they are appreciated. The homecoming was great, especially when you win. And I like, you know, visiting with our administration and our faculty, it was, it's nice to hang loose. I like that. Also, the celebration that trustee Pennergass stated, the celebration of schools in Tustin, I was most impressed. It's giving ATEP a run for its money, because it is well-done. And I think it's important that we dress education well. And both places are magnificent in structure, and the people that we met that night were excellent. I also wanted to say and express my sympathy to you. I am so sorry. I don't know if you know that trustee Carolyn Innan's husband passed away this last week. And I just want to tell you, from our board, from all of us, you have our sympathy. Thank you.
Thank you for that. Trustee Milchiker.
Yeah.
Turn on your mic.
Just wanted to remind trustee Dec that I was at the IVC College Walk of Hope, too, for suicide awareness. I was sitting at the table at the end of the event, but, you know, they forget so soon. It's okay, no problem. I attended a number of things. I thought I'd kind of emphasize on the Advantech groundbreaking. I recall telling our great chancellor, Bob Lombardi, at that time, to go out and get that valuable land on the Marine Corps Station, because that very valuable land, and it's in our own district in Tustin, another district was fighting for it, but he did, and we got it, and I was thrilled. And this past few years, ATEP is taking off with great public-private partnerships that are a win-win for our students and for our colleges' bottom lines. And we're thrilled to get Advantech, a highly-rated international internet of things, worldwide corporation from Taiwan. I checked it out with my daughter-in-law, Yixun Cho, who gave it two thumbs up. She came to the groundbreaking. She teaches at Brandtman University, and she's friends with some of the Taiwanese ambassadors that came to the groundbreaking as well. She actually has, she has, she achieved a Paul Bright Teaching Scholarship to the Czech Republic last year and wrote some papers on semiconductors. And Taiwan is the goal, is the global leader on semiconductor industries, producing 90% of the world's most advanced chips. The majority of them come from the Taiwan Semiconductor Manufacturer Company, or TSMC, the world's largest chipmaker. If you wanted to find out more about that, read the interesting book, Chip War, by Chris Miller. And the, I had, we had some really in-depth conversations with some of the leaders of Advantech, a very, a worldwide, very important, impressive country, who, as I said, are studying the Internet of Things, and he promised he's going to give wonderful internships to our students. So that's very exciting. I also went to the Legislative Task Force, the Saddleback Classified Luncheon, the Orange County Business Council Economic Forecast, met with Senator Blankenspear, Blank spear, sorry?
Blank spear.
Blank spear?
Blank spear.
Blank spear?
Not blank.
Oh, Blake spear. Blake spear. I met with her, but now I'm getting her name right. The, visited the Innovation Lab at Saddleback College, attended the Saddleback Gala, and what was really fun was that they honored the Mars Rover team, and I was in the video, and that was really fun. The team was there, and it was great. And I saw the Saddleback Musical Company by Stephen Sandheim, and it's there for another week at Saddleback College, and I recommend it, it's very kind of an intellectual musical. Thanks.
Okay, thank you for that. I will try to reclaim some of the time.
Okay, thank you. I tried to be.
No, I'm not going to repeat all the events. It was a good report.
Okay, thank you.
As you can see, the colleges are on the move, the trustees are engaged, there's so many things happening. The impact on the community is amazing. I think the groundbreaking at ATEP with Advantech is a manifestation of a vision that's been a vision for 25 years that now is becoming, putting in place, reality. I did speak to the CEO, I don't mind saying this publicly, he committed to me at the groundbreaking that he will endeavor to hire our students, to the extent they're able to, and also bring them on as interns. So I think this is an amazing opportunity, an amazing development. The Black Chamber of Commerce event was fantastic, and in fact, harkening back to my invocation, the honoree that evening was Ken Kachigian. He received their humanitarian award, who was Ronald Reagan's chief speechwriter. I did attend, I don't think anyone mentioned this one, the South Orange County Economic Coalition Meet Elected Officials event at Memorial Care Hospital in Laguna Hills, and it was good to interact with other school, school board members, K-12, city council members, and mayors. Then, of course, the gala this past Friday night. It's hard to get more inspirational than, than attending one of these galas, this time Saddleback College, and of course, in the spring will be at Irvine Valley College. And again, to Elliot, to your team, to the foundation, to the Board of Governors, who were. worked tirelessly, congratulations. I am fully supportive of everything that you're doing, and I think the board is as well, so thank you, thank you for all those efforts. And then finally, trustee Inman, I, I wanted to echo what trustee Rydell said and offer my sincere condolences to you and your family for your loss. So with that, I will ask student trustee Clemente to offer her remarks.
Good afternoon. I'm just coming back from LA, and I have to drive back, so pray for me tonight. But I'm coming from the Blueprint for Success 2024, John Burton's Next Up Program, and it was life-changing. Seven students and three staff went from Irvine Valley College, and that is far more than any other junior college that we've seen at the, at the event that was there. And I would highly encourage the following years to send more students, just because students really feel heard and seen. And so a lot of what we discussed really goes toward feeling a sense of belonging and maybe DEIA in a classroom and what that means besides putting that at the bottom of a syllabi, and, and how to overcome imposter syndrome. And so these are three important key factors to me that I took from this, from day one, because there's still more days to follow. It is all day and it is pretty long, but I do, I'm so grateful that we have this here and that we're able to send students out to really understand what student rights are and what it feels like to make a difference and know that they, what they believe in is achievable and other people believe in them as well. So there was that. And then also, within my office hours, students really wanted to advocate for seeing a collaboration from both schools with, to utilize student-led events and athletic events as well. So I would like to work with both ASGs and trying to maneuver that access fee. That's all.
Thank you for your report. All right, let's move on and get on to other oral reports tonight. We'll start out with our students. We'll start out with ASG of Irvine Valley College, Clarice Encarnacion.
Good evening, everybody. We just wrapped up our elections this past week. We had a total of 1,400 votes cast, which is a little less than 10% of our entire student population, so that is honestly pretty impressive. Last fall, we only had 700 students vote, so we nearly, we actually did double the amount of students that voted in this fall election. We hosted a candidate town hall, a local candidate town hall, and we had a really great turnout. We had several mayoral candidates for the city of Irvine attend, as well as candidates running for the areas up for reelection. We also had Dave Min, who is the Democratic candidate for California Congressional District 47, he stopped by to say a couple of words. About two weekends ago, we had sent four ASIVC members and two club officers to attend the Seesaw Conference. This is the first time that we opened up this opportunity to club members, and they shared their gratitude for allocating SRF funds to be able to send them to the conference. So this is something that we're hoping to do in the coming years as well. And the attendees presented their initiatives that they would like to implement in ASIVC and their respective clubs at this past legislative meeting. So it was really lovely hearing from them. Our inter-club council branch will be collaborating with the city of Irvine to participate in a community service event, and these club members will be making quilts for the 211 Marine Battalion Project for the Love Irvine event this coming Saturday, November 2nd. And tomorrow, ASIVC will be hosting our Monster Mash Mixer, which is our Halloween event, and we are inviting students to join us for a night of thrills, chills, and good vibes. And lastly, but certainly not least, Dr. Arminay Derigishian, our new Assistant Dean of Students, finally joined us October 7th, and it's been a lovely three weeks with her as our new advisor, and she is an incredibly knowledgeable leader. And I also want to thank Erin Pollard for filling in the position in the meantime, and she has put in a lot of her time and hard work into ASIVC to make sure that our ASIVC officers have felt supported. Thank you, and that concludes my report.
Thank you for that report. Off to Saddleback College, Kristin Swazel.
Good evening, members of the board. I apologize if my voice is a little different than usual. Last night, I went to Halloween Horror Nights at Universal Studios, and I had a good scream there. However, that's not all that I attended last week. Last Friday, I had the privilege of attending the 24th Saddleback College Foundation Gala at the Ritz-Carlton, representing Associated Student Government with Leah Salazar, our officer of publicity. It was a delightful evening with great entertainment from our amazing cheerleaders to our talented swing band. I was happy to hear speeches from President Stern, Vice President Vokomoto, and executive, and from Executive Director McCann herself, in addition to hearing great updates from our multiple programs on campus, such as the Mars Rovers Program and moving testimonies from our Veterans Program. I also was glad to have run into members of the board who were there at the gala, such as President Jamal, Vice President Rydell, and Chancellor Barnes, as well as one of my favorite directors, and trustee Milchiker, as well as one of my, as well as one of my favorite professors, Anthony Cesarek. I'd like to thank Executive Director McCann and the foundation for the invitation. All in all, it was a great evening. As you already know, Saddleback College Associated Student Government gives $34,600 to the foundation, $8,000 for book scholarships, and $30,000 for child development services. Saddleback College attended the California Community College Student Affairs Association Conference in Los Angeles Seesaw earlier this month with great insight on leadership building, civic engagement, and networking. We had 70 students attend our Halloween karaoke and costume party on the 24th. I'd like to thank Aram Manafi and our events committee for that. Election Day is going to be a week from tomorrow. As I've stated to the board over the past month, my priority as president of Associated Student Government is to get our peers to go and vote. We have finished 17th in, among the California community colleges in the ballot bowl. We will have our Don't Ghost the Vote event, which is a Halloween voter registration table, where we will have some activities to remind people to vote and information for students on their polling locations, as they can do same-day voter registration at the same polling places. Voting is our voice, and given the gravity of this election, it will have effects lasting most of our lifetimes. So that is the end of my report. I'd like to thank you all.
Thank you for that. Now, moving on to IVC Academic Senate, Rebecca Beck.
Thank you all. First and foremost, my heartfelt condolences to you, trustee Inman, for the passing of your husband. I wanted to spend tonight just sharing a few updates on some of the work our colleagues are doing, and so I wanted to begin by sharing the work that we have done with the hub. Just to remind you a little bit, we began creating our Center for Professional Learning last year, and now the programming gets going, though we may not have the physical space. So I wanted to share some of the programming we've had. We have teaching squares that is going well, and that is where four faculty have come together to observe each other's courses, and this is to kind of understand a little bit more or understand a little bit more of our student experience, what it is like to go to a geometry, wait, not geometry, we're going to teach a statistics class, or English, or theater. And so that one is going well. We also had successful ceramics workshop, and here I want to say thank you to our colleague, Randy O'Brien. She's our ceramics professor. She hosted 25 people and taught them how to work on the wheel and create art. So again, another very, just super chill vibes event that just brings people together and hang out and, again, create community. Workbook Club, this is an event that's been hosted by our colleague, Dr. Brittany Adams, and she is leading the group as we study the book Do the Work by Roxane Gay, whom I spoke about last time. So that one's going well, too. And lastly, I want to also mention our AI Workshop Series that is happening right now, and we've had two workshops so far, one on essentially demystifying what ChatGPT is, then we had the one on prompt engineering for faculty and for our classified professionals. And lastly, I know I'm in the red, I want to talk about curriculum because the work that our curriculum coordinator, or excuse me, curriculum chair, RJ Dolbin, is doing is incredible, and I want to say thank you and give him a shout out because there's been a lot of changes, and he's been keeping us sane, for lack of a better word, and getting the work done. Thank you.
Thank you for that. Saddleback College Academic Senate, Dan Walsh.
Good evening. I'll be brief for reasons that'll be obvious in a second. Two items, an observation and a thank you. Just an observation that my board, the Saddleback Valley Unified School District, does not meet when there's a World Series game going on. And on a related note, thank you, there's no presentations tonight, so hopefully this evening goes quickly, and it's 3-0, top of the fifth. What? Dodgers must have just.
Dodgers? Dodgers 3-0.
Dodgers are winning. My thing needs to refresh, so thank you, everybody, for the update.
I guess we don't have the undivided attention of the.
Apparently not. I'm actually kind of amazed at the number of corrections that happened out there.
Wow.
Awesome.
Unabasheded.
All right, I'm done.
All right. Okay. Moving on to the Faculty Association, and we have Deanna Schurger.
Thank you. I'm here tonight for Robert, who's giving a presentation at one of our high schools, but I feel like he's also following the game, maybe on the down low. So I want to continue with the theme. I personally was not able to attend the gala at Saddleback, but I know Robert was and some of our members were, and I'm just very proud that our Faculty Association was there to contribute. And the work that both of our foundations do is so vital to our students. I know many of our faculty have heard about how an emergency grant or a scholarship really was the deciding factor in whether students continued their education. So we also look forward to attending the IVC Gala in the spring. As we have the IVC Saddleback Research Symposium coming up on Friday, I just wanted to take a minute to highlight the work that our faculty mentors are doing, investing time above and beyond to help our students with each of their individual projects. This year, we have 34 faculty who are mentoring 81 projects, so that will be very exciting, and we look forward to seeing the work of our students next week, this week on Friday. We also have an upcoming workshop on November 22nd, I believe, for our part-time faculty on how to apply for a full-time job. And then finally, I do want to highlight the work of Andy Ground, who is retiring after 15 years as a kinesiology instructor and head men's basketball coach, and he is the most successful basketball coach in Saddleback history with eight conference championships and two state championships. So we wish him a very happy retirement. Thank you.
Thank you for that. Now, on to IVC Classified Senate, Ace Caguia.
Caguia.
Caguia. I'm going to get it right.
Almost there, almost there.
I'm, I'm getting better every time.
Good evening, everyone. So we're actually quite busy. We had, we've had a lot of programming and upcoming programming for our classified professionals at IVC. So two Fridays ago, we actually held our pilot program of an IVC-specific new hire orientation for classified professionals. We were able to host 12 new hires. That's been new for the past six months. Our newest one was actually around two weeks. And we did an overview, overview of the Senate, overview of CSEA, so we did have a representative from CSEA attend as well, did overviews of professional development opportunities for classified professionals at IVC, gave them a campus tour, so they were able to be familiar more with the campus, and actually had a very nice intimate conversation, and actually ended the whole day, half-day, at Dr. Hernandez's office. So it was a really, really great day. Feedback has been very positive, and we're hoping to set the new dates for spring and for our summer orientations. Another is, for the past three years, we've actually carried over a tradition that's been carried mostly by our facilities, classified professionals at IVC, and that is our Thanksgiving Turkey Drive, particularly for students. Last year, we were able to provide Thanksgiving baskets for 60 students, and this was partnering with Basic Needs and EOPS. We're doing it again this year, and we're hoping to expand it to up to 75 students. Shout out to our classified professionals guided pathways completion team. They are planning, busy planning our first gen day, which will be on November 14th at the SSC Quad. And lastly, something that's really fun that's coming up at IVC, it's going to be a very, very festive Halloween. IVC Classified Senate is once again hosting our Halloween Door Decorating Contest at IVC. It's getting quite competitive. There's emails going around. We have over 17 departments and alliances who are going to compete this Thursday. So if you're free, please visit IVC and see all the decorated doors.
Thank you, Ace. Now, on the Saddleback College Classified Senate, Eileen.
Hi, good evening, everyone. Just a few updates. We are also working on a Saddleback College onboarding experience for our new employees, something that's specific to the campus, that welcomes, makes folks feel like they're really part of the community. We're hoping to have our first one in the spring, so we have a work group going on right now under Classified Senate. Thank you to both Vice Chancellor McDonald and Chancellor Barnes for visiting the last two Classified Senate meetings that we had. First, to discuss Banner, it was really helpful for lots of the folks who are, who got to attend President Stern's Town Hall to ask further questions and like ask about the timeline for training, because I think that's what most folks are thinking about, so I appreciate that. Chancellor Barnes, lots of people really appreciated you coming and speaking about the strategic plan, how we are going to talk about updating our facilities plan, and it's really exciting to see how much engagement our classified folks at Saddleback are looking forward to, how much they're looking forward to contributing to that conversation. Coming up, we have Stargazing Night, so one of my colleagues are just asking me to like promote it, so I'm doing my job. Stargazing Night on November 7th from 6:00 to 9:00 p.m. at the Observatory. It's open to the community. It's really cool. They'll be doing activities around, you know, the galaxy. And then First Gen Day will be November 12th. It's a Tuesday from 10:00 to 2:00. We'll be doing our handprint wall. It'll be outside of the bookstore on that part of the quad. And then I also want to say that October is a Filipino-American History Month here in California, or around the nation, but then in California, last Friday, it was Larry Itliang Day, and he is one of the labor organizers that started the Delano grape strike. So I just wanted to say that always be Galabanting for your Filipinos.
Very cool. Thank you for that report. Now, CSEA President Scott Green.
Thank you, Mr. President. Good evening, board. Good evening, Dr. Barnes. First of all, we want to thank you ahead of time for accepting the tentative agreement that we are about to conclude. It's been a long road, but sometimes a long road is worth waiting for when you are able to see the light at the end of the tunnel. We want to thank Dr. Viscachill and her team for being able to meet with us. We were able to finally get some agreements that we feel they're very satisfied. It will be up to the members to ratify the contract, and we're looking forward and hope that they do. The presidential season is always something that I personally take note of. I was actually a student of my fourth-grade teacher, who was Hubert Humphrey's personal secretary when he ran for president in 1968. My maternal great-grandmother, her name is Frances Pendleton. Pendleton might not mean anything here in California, but it sure means something in Virginia, because the Pendletons were a political dynasty in Virginia. And my cousin, George Hunt Pendleton, he actually was the running mate of George McClellan in 1864, when they ran against Abraham Lincoln and Andrew Johnson. And so presidential seasons always mean a lot to me. My cousin George, after he lost the election, he went on to marry the daughter of Frances Scott Key, so he kept the Stars and Stripes in the family. So we're looking forward to this season. CSEA is very much encouraging everyone that is part of CSEA to vote. We are nation statewide where we have 240,000 members, and every single town, every single county across the state, we are encouraging people to exercise their privilege and right to vote.
Thank you for that. Obviously, I concur with that sentiment. Now, we don't, don't think we have anyone from POA that's here, so moving on to board requests for reports, I don't think we have any. We don't have any public hearings, Dan, so you'll be happy with that. On resolutions, we do have one resolution related to a statewide ballot measure, Proposition 2, and I'll turn it over to trustee Inman.
Item 6.1, Resolution in Support of Proposition 2. Be it resolved that the Board of Trustees of the South Orange County Community College District supports Proposition 2, the Kindergarten Through Grade 12 Schools and Local Community College Public Education Facilities Modernization, Repair, and Safety Bond Act of 2024. May we have a motion?
Motion, trustee Rydell, second from trustee Milchiker. Any questions on Proposition 2? No? Okay, let's vote. Okay, so let's, Grace, unfortunately. Okay, so let's, uh, Grace, unfortunately, I think we have to call the roll, because I, I can't see it.
Trustee Dak.
Aye.
Trustee Inman.
Aye.
Trustee Jamal.
Aye.
Trustee Milchiker.
Trustee Prendergast.
Aye.
Trustee Rydell.
Aye.
Student trustee Clemente.
The item carries on a unanimous trustee yes vote and a student trustee yes vote. We are now moving on to seven point one. Trustees' request for attending conferences. Can I get a motion for approval?
So moved.
Motion from trustee Witt, second from trustee Milchiker. Do we need to do an oral roll call, or should I wait a minute? Okay. The item carries on a unanimous trustee yes vote and a student advisory yes vote. Seven point two, Board Policy Revision for Approval. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Motion from trustee Dak.
Second.
Second from trustee Milchiker. Any questions? No, let's go ahead and vote on the item. Item carries unanimously with a student trustee yes vote. Seven point three, Board Policy Revision for Review and Study. Is there a motion for approval?
So moved.
Motion from trustee Milchiker.
Second.
Second from trustee Dak. Any questions? No? Ain't no questions, let's go ahead and vote. Motion carries on a unanimous trustee yes vote and a student trustee yes vote. Now, uh, there are no presentations or discussion items, so we're moving on to the consent. I keep looking at you. Moving on to consent calendar, do we have any polls from the consent calendar? No? Does someone make?
No.
Make a motion to move, to approve the consent calendar?
Motion to approve the entire consent calendar.
Motion from trustee Milchiker.
Second.
Second from trustee Dak. Assuming no questions, let's go ahead and vote on the consent calendar. Item carries on a unanimous trustee yes vote and a student trustee yes vote. So we're on to Business Services. Ten point one, Sign Language Interpreting and Closed Captioning Services, Master Independent Contractor Agreements, Goodwill. And others, is there a motion to? Motion from trustee Prendergast? Is there a second? Can we get a second? Second from trustee Rydell. Any questions? No, let's go ahead and vote. The item carries on a unanimous trustee yes vote and a student trustee yes vote. Ten point two, I V C Fine Arts Promenade and Coffee Structure Award of Bid to Archigo Design and Build.
So moved.
Motion from trustee Milchiker.
Second.
Second from trustee Dak. Any questions? Uh, seeing one?
This, this better be some really expensive coffee for eleven million dollars for, like, that's, that's a lot. Do we have a scope of this project?
It's not just coffee. It's, it's a whole outdoor learning space, but President Hernandez or Vice Chancellor Gable, if you want to talk about it.
So it, it's a, um, it's like a freestanding, small coffee shop. Plus, I think the big cost of it is related to the promenade. So what they're doing is they're redoing all of the walkways from the parking structure on the, what would that be? The west side, no, east side of the pack and the new Fine Arts Village, all the way up through the campus and kind of redoing all that entire sidewalk and workway leading into the coffee structure and then kind of coming out. So a lot of infrastructure, a lot of paving, a lot of re-landscaping and new landscaping, as well as building a whole new structure that is like a small coffee shop.
Okay, so you know where I'm going with this. Is this in the Facilities Master Plan?
It wasn't originally in the Facilities Master Plan, but as we have reevaluated the Facilities Master Plan every single year, it is something that came up and trickled through I V Cs. And so it was in kind of the amended Facilities Master Plan that was approved by the Board last April.
So a coffee cart promenade over a pool. Okay. Okay.
We're gonna make sure you attend the ribbon cutting. All right. Any other questions? Let's go ahead and vote on the item. The item carries on a six to zero trustee yes vote and a student trustee yes vote. We are pulling item ten point three. That will be heard at a later board meeting. So we're moving on to Human Resources, eleven point one, Academic Employees and Management Personnel Actions and Ratifications.
Point.
No changes.
Personal privilege real quick.
Sure.
Colin, you can go. You have your three items. See you tomorrow.
Good job, Colin. No changes.
No changes.
Okay, do you wanna, can we have a motion and a second first? Motion, trustee Milchiker.
Second.
Second from trustee Dak. Trustee Milchiker. Your mic.
Yeah, I didn't want to approve this, because one of the people retiring is Grace Garcia, who's been a wonderful, fabulous, um, what is her job now? District Director. So she works for the chancellor, she works for all seven board members, and she's been here for twenty-five years and one month. And I'm like devastated that she's retiring. I don't know, I don't know what I'm going to do, so.
We'll just vote no.
I wanted to vote no. She does a fabulous job. She's really, really good. She's very, always professional and always does her job and always keeps up with everything. And it's just, we're really gonna miss her. So, so, okay, that's number one. Okay, maybe we'll talk more about you another time. Okay, thanks. And then the other one is, that was already mentioned, is Andy Ground. He's a kinesiology instructor and a men's basketball coach. And it was already mentioned how many games he's won, and he's retiring after fifteen years and four months. So we thank, uh, we thank Grace and we thank Andy for their wonderful service to our district. We'll really miss them. We'll really miss you.
Okay, thank you for that. I'll reserve comments about, about Grace until the next meeting. So let, um, we have a motion and a second. Any other comments? Let's go ahead and vote on the item. The item carries on a six to zero trustee yes vote and an abstention from our student trustee. Now on eleven point two, Classified Personnel Actions and Ratifications.
No changes.
No changes to the item. Is there a motion for approval?
So moved, but I have to mention three people quickly.
Got it. Motion trustee Milchiker, second from trustee Dak, trustee Milchiker.
Okay, um, three very good employees are retiring. Missial Banderas, who is the lead workhouse worker, has worked for us twenty-one years in district services. Andrea McGintley is the financial aid specialist, who's worked for us for thirteen years and seven months at Saddleback College. And Doris Muchi Ranhando, sorry, Admissions and Records Evaluator, who's worked for Saddleback College for twenty-four years. And we thank these loyal employees for their many years of service. Thank you.
Thank you for that, and I agree. Let's, any other comments? No? Let's go ahead and vote on the item. The item carries on a six to zero trustee yes vote and a student trustee abstention. We're now on to eleven point three, Adjustment to the Salary Schedule for District Management Team.
So moved.
Motion trustee Dak.
Second.
Second from trustee Prendergast. Any questions on the item? Okay, let's go ahead and vote. The item carries on a six to zero trustee yes vote and a student trustee abstention. Eleven point four, C S E A Chapter five eighty-six, Tentative Agreements.
May you indulge me for one minute, please. No one knows how difficult it is to come to a new three-year agreement except the two teams at the table, and I want to acknowledge and thank Scott Ferguson-Green for his leadership. His team at the table included Tiffany Lopez, C S E A, Orange Field Office, Desiree Ortiz, Dan LeBeau, Dean LeBeau, Haley King, Erlin Bellow. Did Erlin leave? All right, thank you, Erlin. And Nathan Quok from the district's team. It was Kim Widdis, Joshua Taylor, Nick Wilkin, and David Kechatrian. And a big thanks to Leilani Ansamo for putting together all of these documents. So thank you.
Excellent. Okay, I think we need a motion and a second.
So moved.
Motion trustee Dak.
Second.
Second from trustee Prendergast. Any questions? Any further questions? Okay, let's vote on the item. The motion carries unanimously on a six to zero trustee yes vote and a student trustee abstention. We're now on to eleven point five, Faculty Association Master Agreement. Do you want to say anything?
No, this is just the solidification of all that we've done to have the Board approve the final contract. Thank you.
Okay. Do we have a motion?
Second.
Uh, I think trustee Milchiker made the motion, trustee Dak seconded. Any questions? Comments? Okay, let's go ahead and vote. Motion, the item carries on a six to zero trustee yes vote and a student trustee abstention. Now on to Educational and Technology Services. We don't have any items for discussion. Information items, Saddleback College and I V C speakers and board members. If you have a comment, let me know on each item. Staff response, thirteen point two, Staff Response to Public Comments from the Previous Board Meeting. And then thirteen point three, Monthly Financial Status Report. And moving on to our written and oral reports from our administration and governance groups, and I will, let's kick it off with Chancellor Barnes.
Thank you so much. I just wanted, you know, let Dan know that I didn't even know the World Series was going on, because, you know, I'm San Diego, and so game five, I was out once the Padres lost. So anyway, thanks for letting us know about that. Exactly. As was mentioned, and as you all know, that we are, we have officially launched Inspire two thousand and thirty-five, which is basically the development of our next strategic plan and an update to our Facilities Master Plan. You may recall, for those of you who were here before, we launched the development of our last plans just before the pandemic. And as we all know, there's, a lot has changed since then. So I'm super excited that we have what we're calling the Chancellors Planning Commission. It's a thirty-six-member commission of constituents from throughout the district to help really shape the future of our colleges and districts. So I'm super excited to be able to do that. It's not just about metrics, and it is, you know, in, in part about objectives and goals and metrics, but it's also about the experiences that our students and our employees need and deserve with regard to our infrastructure and our culture. And so very excited to launch that work. The, uh, it's called the Education Engagement Survey was launched on Friday, and your voices matter, so for our students and all of our employees, please take a look at that. It takes like fifteen, twenty minutes, and so that's just gonna be one of the ways that you can engage with the strategic plan. So I wanted to mention that. And yes, to the variety of activities and events, there was so much happening in the last month, so I'm really proud of both of the colleges for all the great work that you're doing to celebrate really human beings and, and the various experiences that our students have. And then finally, I just want to add my condolences as well to trustee Inman for your loss with your, with your husband. I know it's been very tough, to say the least, so sending you love and strength.
Thank you for that. Moving on to I V C President, John Hernandez.
Thank you, trustee Jamal. In early October, October eighth, the U S Department of Ed announced its Post-Secondary Success Recognition Program. It's a new program they are inaugurating this year. It is part of Secretary Cardona's Raise the Bar Initiative. The department identified the top one hundred four-year universities and the top one hundred two-year colleges that were eligible to apply for the program. And I V C was very honored to have made the cut and to have been invited to apply. And similar to the Aspen Top One Fifty, all eligible institutions are encouraged to submit an application. We are working on doing that. The deadline is November first, and the department plans to announce the award in early two thousand and twenty-five. And we were one of ten California community colleges nominated. So we're very honored to have been included. And then lastly, I want to congratulate Vice President Martha McDonald while she's not here in person. I know she is live streaming today's board meeting. She was selected through Assemblywoman Petrie Norris's office to be recognized as one of this year's Veteran of the Year. There are three recipients, and Dr. McDonald is one of those three. And they, those individuals will be recognized at the annual Veteran of the Year Ceremony on Friday, November first. I V C will once again host that event on our campus. Thank you. That concludes my update.
That's awesome. Please, I know she's, Dr. McDonald, I know you're watching. Congratulations, well deserved. Saddleback College President, Elliot Stern.
Thank you very much, President Jamal. First, did not make my report, but one of the events that we'll report out next month was our Adjunct Faculty Appreciation Night. I want to thank the Kims, Kim Cube, Kim D R C, Kim Stankovich, and Kim Hugh, who put all that together. A spectacular event with just enough P D mixed in to make it media and substantive and to help the medicine go down with a really fun event. Calling your attention to Chris Wazo on social media. He did a selfie with Bill Clinton, which is the most difficult a current president to get a selfie with, I am told. So having only one with Biden, I am super jealous. So good for you. And finally, I want to call attention to curriculum in this month's board report. Curriculum includes, for Saddleback College, two new degrees, an A S T in Computer Science. We, we do have an associate degree, but this is our first A S T, Associate Science of Transfer. And then also a new program, a new degree in Administration of Justice. That A S T will sit in Sociology in the School of Humanities and Social Science. In addition, there's a, many pages, you may have noticed, of changes that the faculty are making in our curriculum in compliance with new common course numbering that Tranvo Kumamoto has had up at the state level as well. She's not the blame for it, but she is heading it up and helping us implement it. And also with the new Cal Getzi. So you'll see lots of curriculum changes happening over the next six to ten months as we endeavor to comply with these new state laws. So I just want to shout out to all the faculty who are doing that work to make that possible. And finally, big congratulations to Liz and her team and to all of the donors who made this gala memorable. And I just would pile on to the group hug of condolences, trustee Inman. Thank you very much.
Thank you for that.
Thank you for noticing, thank you for noticing my LinkedIn post, President Stern.
All right, moving on, Vice Chancellor of Educational and Technology Services, Chris McDonald.
No report.
No report. Thank you. Vice Chancellor of Human Resources.
Just briefly, I want to say thank you to the Board and how proud I am of this district to have been able to be given the authority to work with Scott Ferguson-Green to negotiate a historic contract for our classified professionals. That includes, for the very first time, lifetime medical starting in July first of two thousand and twenty-six. So this is probably one of the only districts in the state to do so, and we should be very proud of that. Thank you.
Excellent news. And finally, to conclude the evening, Vice Chancellor of Business Services, Anne Marie Gable.
Go Dodgers.
All right. On that note, go Dodgers and good evening, good night.